Okay, with that, I'll call to order tonight's meeting of the City of Santa Rosa Planning Commission and begin by reading this statement. Due to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Orders N-25-20 and N-29-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act and the Order of the Health Officer of the County of Sonoma to shelter in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19, the Planning Commissioners will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom webinar. Commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations and/or practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak during Item 4, public comment, or during our public hearing items will be able to do so by raising their hand and will be given the ability to address the commission. And with that, I will ask the Recording Secretary for roll call, please.
Record reflect that all commissioners are present.
Great, thanks for that. We will move on to the approval of our minutes for August 27. Any comments or corrections? Not seeing any, so those will stand as printed. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to public comments, which is a time for any member of the public wishing to address the commission on matters of interest to the commission may do so at this time. Items that are not listed tonight as a public hearing. If you're on Zoom, you would participate by hitting your raise hand function. If you're dialing in by phone, you dial *9. Our host will allow you to unmute and call your name when it's time for you to speak. A little timer will show on the screen that will show you the countdown of the three minutes that you're allotted to speak. So with that, I'll go ahead and open public comments and ask our host if there is anyone wishing to speak.
Chair Cisco, at this time, no one is raising their hands.
Okay. Give that just a couple of seconds here. And if there's still no one raising their hand, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. And move on to Planning Commissioner's Report. And any, yes, Vice Chair Weeks.
I wanted to report that on September 16th, there was a meeting of the Subdivision Development Advisory Committee, and at that time, we approved a lot split that would subdivide a one-acre parcel into two single-family residential parcels. And it was located, or this is located at 2031 Dennis Lane in Santa Rosa, and it was approved by the committee.
Great, thank you. Any other Commissioner reports? I just wanted to pass along that staff is very, very appreciative of the commissioners for putting their questions to the various items in advance. That really helps them to be prepared at the time of the hearing, and they're very appreciative of how you all do that so well. Wanted to pass that along. Next, we'll move on to department reports.
Good afternoon, Chair Cisco and members of the Commission. This is Bill Rose. I wanted to go over just a couple of items. I think some of this information you might already know. It has to do with staffing changes and then how it'll directly relate to this commission. Before I do that, though, I'd like to mention just briefly on the on-camera policy or having staff on camera. We know that the City Council is moving that way, having the staff presenters and liaisons on camera. We're gonna, we're working through a policy. We want to make sure we're consistent with all of our boards and commissions. So tonight, you won't see the staff on camera, but we will be implementing a policy to do that, so they're on camera at the appropriate time, and we're going to make sure that's just consistent across the board. So we're, we're working on that. The other thing I wanted to mention, though, are some of the staffing changes. So I'm sure you all know by me here tonight, I'm not Claire. Claire has moved on to the Assistant City Manager role. So with that, it's opened up some opportunities within our department. So I am assuming Claire's former position, and these are interim assignments, all of these that I'm mentioning. These are for six months. So I'll be the interim Deputy Director. So that opened up my previous position, Supervising Planner, and Andrew Triple will be assuming that role. He's the interim Supervising Planner for the next six months. And then Adam Ross has moved into Andrew's previous position. So Adam will be the interim Senior Planner. So you'll see a little bit different titles on, on the staff as we go forward. One other thing I wanted to mention is so that with Claire's movement over to Assistant City Manager, her role as the liaison became open. What we're going to do is I'm the Liaison to the Design Reboard. We have a lot of activity there, and so I've decided to stay with that board. I'll be the primary liaison. And Andrew Triple will be the Planning Commission Liaison. So going forward, you will see he'll be providing the department reports, he'll be staffing each of these meetings. While I'm on that point, one thing that you may or may not know is you will always have your staff presenter and your liaison, but we often have a team of people behind the scenes working to just do research and answer questions, things you normally see us at the staff table doing. So I will likely be behind the scenes, and Claire might even be behind the scenes as well. So you have a full assortment of staff working. With that, that really concludes the department reports, but I would like to introduce Andrew Triple as your new liaison. So Andrew, if you wouldn't mind saying a few words.
Sure, thanks, Bill, and thank you for the opportunity, Chair Cisco and members of the Planning Commission. I've, over the last four years, have enjoyed working with you as a project planner, presenting to you and, and participating in, in your review of projects. And I also look forward to working with you in, in this new role as staff liaison and continuing to be a part of the excellent work that the commission does for the City of Santa Rosa. So you'll, you'll have my contact information. I'm always available, and we'll look forward to the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Triple. Looking forward to working with you. Is that the end of department reports?
Yeah, that concludes department reports.
Great, okay. Next, we have Statements of Abstention by Commissioners. Any abstentions tonight? Great. We have no study session or consent items tonight. So with that, we'll, we'll move on to our public hearings. Our first one tonight is Item 10.1, which is the public hearing for the Green Key Cannabis Retail Conditional Use Permit. It is an ex parte disclosure. Mr. Carter, anything to disclose?
I did visit the site, but I have nothing further to disclose.
Vice Chair Weeks?
I also visited the site, but have nothing further to disclose.
Mr. Oprekki?
I have nothing to disclose.
Mr. Kaya?
I visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
Mr. Peterson?
I visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
And Mr. Duggan?
I visited the site and have nothing further to disclose.
And I also visited the site and have no new information to disclose. So with that, we will move on to that item, and Planner Monet Shikail will be giving the staff reports.
Thank you, Chair Cisco and members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to share my PowerPoint right now. So we can see that. Okay. Thank you, Chair Cisco and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you today is a request for a conditional use permit for Green Key located at 4880 Highway 12. The applicant is proposing to operate a dispensary with delivery and onsite indoor consumption, which will occupy an existing 1,410-square-foot commercial building. Hours of operation will be from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. And here is a photo of the existing building. The project is located in northeast quadrant on the south side of Highway 12, along other commercial uses. The surrounding area land uses are mix of commercial, office, and some residential uses. The adjacent property on the west is a legal nonconforming single-family home, and the property located on the east side is a veterinary clinic, and the property on the south has two residential units. The site is located in an area designated by the General Planned Land Use diagram as retail and business services, as shown by the red color here, and the zone is neighborhood commercial, which is consistent with the general planned land use designation. However, a small section of the Saturn portion of the lot is zoned for single-family residential, which is not consistent with the general planned land use, but no cannabis use is being proposed on that portion of the lot. Here is the project history, some highlights. On June 3, 2019, a conditional use permit application was submitted, and on October of 2019, application was deemed complete. On November 6, 2019, the neighborhood meeting was held, and no one from the public attended the meeting. And on July 23, 2020, staff received updated document addressing issues letter. Dispensary users are not allowed to be between 600 feet of another dispensary or school. The red circle in this slide shows 600 feet distance from the proposed site. Whitehead Elementary School is approximately 800 feet from the project site, and no other dispensary is located between 600 feet from the proposed site. This is the site plan that shows the existing commercial building and the existing parking areas. The number of required parking spaces for this use is six spaces, and the applicant is providing 10 parking spaces on site. The four additional parking spaces will be behind the building and will be used by the employees. And here is the floor plan that shows the proposed areas. The dispensary provides a lobby area at the entrance to receive members and check their IDs for verification before entering the dispensary retail sales area. The dispensary will have only indoor onsite consumption area that is adjacent to the retail sales floor, and it will be monitored so that only customers over the age of 20 will be allowed. There will be no visibility into the onsite consumption area from anywhere on the premises, and onsite consumption will include only topical and ingestibles, and no onsite vaping is being proposed with this project. For additional clarification, while state and local regulations do allow onsite consumption for employees and guests or customers subject to certain regulations, any onsite consumptions must be in compliance with Chapter 920 of Santa Rosa City Code Smoking Regulation, Regulations, and State Law. Also, a commissioner asked for clarification regarding the proposed onsite consumption area, and the applicant has clarified that the consumption area will be only located indoor and has provided revised project narrative, site plan, and order mitigation plan for clarification. These revised documents were provided to commissioners yesterday, and they have been made available to the public. Here are elevations of the existing building. The applicant is proposing some minor exterior changes, such as adding two new windows and one door and a chain link fence etiquette. There are no unresolved issues with the proposed project, and I did not receive any comments from the public. The proposed project has been reviewed in compliance with California Environmental Quality Act and qualifies for three exemptions. The project involves minor modification to an existing facility, a change of use, and also qualifies for an infill development. With that, the Planning and Economic Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission, by resolution, approve a conditional use permit for a cannabis retail dispensary with delivery and onsite consumption for the property located at 4880 Highway 12. And here is my contact information if anybody would like to contact for any questions. And that was my presentation. Staff and the applicants are available to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Shikail. Is the applicant wanting to do a presentation?
The applicant has no presentation, but they will be available just to answer questions.
Answer questions, okay, great, thanks for that. Commissioners, any questions right now of staff or potentially the applicant? Okay. So with that, this is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for members of the public interested in commenting. If you're on Zoom, press the raise hand function. If you're dialing in by telephone, please hit *9. The host will recognize you and allow you to unmute when it's your time to speak. There'll be a little timer on the screen that will do a countdown for the three minutes that you're allowed to speak. So with that, I will check with our host if anyone is wishing to comment from the public.
Chair Cisco, no one is raising their hands at this time.
Okay. I'll give that just about five more seconds. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any other questions of staff or the applicant? Okay. Would someone like to read a resolution for the purposes of discussion? Mr. Duggan?
I'll move the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa approving a conditional use permit for Green Key LLC to operate a medicinal and adult-use cannabis retail dispensary and delivery with onsite consumption within an existing 1,410-square-foot building located at 4880 Highway 12, Assessment Parcel Number 032-300-009, File Number CUP19-005, and wait for the reading.
And do I have a second? Okay, great. So I think you have to unmute and say it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I second the resolution.
Okay, great. Okay, so that was moved by Commissioner Duggan, seconded by Vice Chair Weeks. Vice Chair Weeks, you want to start?
Sure. Well, I can make all the findings that's in the resolution, and I think it's a, was a good proposal, was very thorough. We've seen a lot of them since all this has occurred. I am happy to see this in this part of Santa Rosa, which has very few dispensaries. So I'm fully supportive of the proposal and the application.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Yeah, it's a pretty straightforward application, and it seems to be a suitable location. I believe I can make all the findings. I, I do have a, a question that perhaps I should have answered, asked earlier, but the clarification on the onsite consumption, there was a statement in, I think it was the applicant's project description, referring to staff onsite consumption. Has that been removed from the proposal? Is that my understanding?
So the question is regarding the employees' use onsite, correct? So I will suggest the applicant to explain that. They can better explain that. Let me see, oh, Mike, are they? On this meeting?
What was the name that you're looking for?
Henry.
Oh, it looks like we have Green QI is raising their hand right now. We're going to go ahead and give them permission to speak. I believe that's Henry. All right, Henry, you have the ability to mute and unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Monet, I wanted to let you know or be advised, if you can hear us, Green QI, Henry, you don't have a microphone attached to your Zoom, so we are not able to hear you at this time.
Hi, this is Assistant City Attorney Ashley Crocker. I just wanted to jump in and clarify and refer you all to the city's code governing cannabis in Section 20-4608OF does specifically address employees, and employees of the facility who are qualified patients may consume medical cannabis or cannibal cannabis products onsite, provided those are within designated spaces not visible by members of the public, and that that consumption is in compliance with our smoking regulations and state law. So they would not be permitted to be vaping or smoking because that would violate our smoking regulations, smoking regulations in Chapter 920. And perhaps the applicant is on, but I just wanted to set the stage for the code section that was applicable. And we do have a condition attached to this project, as we do to all cannabis projects, that the applicant will have to comply with all of the city's codes and specifically with the cannabis code, so that would include that restriction.
Hello? Hello? Yes, we can hear you now, Henry. Thank you. Sorry. So yes, we do intend to fully comply and with both state and local ordinance and in particular Santa Rosa's smoking ordinance. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Mr. Carter, did you want to finish up anything about the project?
I, I don't have any further questions, and I'm generally in support of the project. I believe I can make the final.
Okay, great. Mr. Peterson?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this is a straightforward application. I think it is, again, I'll echo them. I think it's good to finally see some actual rubber meeting the road on getting cannabis dispensaries spread throughout the city, and with that, I can make all the required findings.
Mr. Kaya?
I can also make all the required findings, and as my fellow commissioners said, this application is pretty thorough, and I will be supporting the project.
Mr. Oprekki?
I have nothing new to add to what my fellow commissioners have already said. I think they've all summarized it for you succinctly, and I can make all the required findings to support the project.
Commissioner Duggan?
I can make all the required findings.
And I also can make the required findings, and it is good to see the, this in the location further, further east. It's good. So with that, the resolution was moved by Commissioner Duggan, seconded by Vice Chair Weeks, and the Reporting Secretary will call for our votes.
All right, as you guys are aware, we're going to go by alphabetical order. We're going to do a roll call, though. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaya?
Aye.
Commissioner Oprekki?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weeks?
Aye.
Chair Cisco?
Aye. And so that passes with seven ayes, and I believe that concludes that item. And unless staff would like a break, we'll just go ahead and move on to Item 10.2, which is our public hearing tonight for the downtown station area specific plan, the final subsequent environmental impact report. And our presenting planner is Amy Lyle.
Yes, good evening. And although you heard Bill earlier, we are going to do a soft opening of our camera being on for staff, and we thought this was a good item to try it out on because some of these more complex items, it's always good to have a visual and then be able to interject and jump in in conversation. So we're going to go for it tonight. So with that, let me share my screen for the presentation here. All right, can you confirm everyone sees the presentation?
I believe we can.
Great. All right, so tonight, we will be asking for your formal recommendation to the City Council on the downtown station area specific plan. So I'm going to provide a presentation on the plan and the EIR, and I'll also be summarizing some of the refinements that we would like to make since our staff report has been released. And so the presentation will be a little bit of a review for you and some of the others in the community that have already been introduced to, to the plan, but I think it's good to go through it again, just to be very thorough and to bring along those members of the community that may not have had the benefit of hearing about this or maybe coming in at this time. With that, I'd also like to note that we are working on the zoning code implementation and the design guidelines, and we're going to be bringing those forward a little bit later. So they are tracking about a month after our specific plan, and so they will be coming to your October 22 Planning Commission meeting. But the specific plan tonight, we are hoping to move forward. We do have a tentative date scheduled with the Planning Commission for October 13. And then I'd also like to note, we do have a deep bench of professionals to respond to questions. So among our consultant team, we have Andrew Hill and Allison Moore of Dyton-Baptia, and then we also have our subconsultants on the call tonight. So we have Zach Maitly of W Trans, we have Christina Decker of Page and Turnbull, and then we have Greg Jennings with BKF Engineering. And then we also have staff and other city folks on the call, and we'll hopefully be able to answer any questions that you have. And I am going to go through and stop in certain points of the presentation to see if there's any clarifying questions, just to keep the presentation smooth here. And so I think I've gone over this, but we will be asking you to hold a public hearing tonight, and then we are asking for your recommendation tonight as well. So just to start off with the schedule and where we've been, as you know, we've embarked on this journey a while ago. It's been about an 18-month process, and although we're a little bit later than what we anticipated, this is pretty much lightning speed for specific plans, at least in California. And we've really made sure to have a robust public input process and have done the outreach and have, in our view, been successful in reaching those that we've wanted to hear from, even with this virtual environment that we've had since March. And so we did start with really a deep dive and looking at the issues and opportunities downtown. What really happened with the 2007 specific plan and, and how can we really refine it and move forward? Did you say something? I'm sorry. Okay. And so with that, we, then we entered into an alternative phase, and we had a bunch of different land use and circulation scenarios that were explored, which closed with a joint review with you and the City Council back in December of 2019, where we confirmed the direction. And then from that point until July, our team and the consultant team have been working very hard to to draft the specific plan and draft the environmental analysis. And so that was released on July fifteenth. And since then, has been undergoing public review. And here we are tonight, um, with your hearing. So the specific plan covers roughly seven hundred and twenty acres of the central part of our city. And it does include a number of our historic neighborhoods and preservation districts. And this, this is basically an overhaul or an update of the two thousand seven specific plan, which was really adopted in anticipation of the smart rail coming in. And it envisioned a large amount of development that, um, did not transpire. And so what we did is really look to see what, what were the goals originally and how were they unmet? So we did check in with the community and the six key goals that were part of the original specific plan still ring true. And so we did use these for the update process. And, um, really were able to set, um, and update a new vision for what we want in the downtown. So the specific plan itself is broken up into six chapters. And the introduction section is really providing a, um, a broad vision of, um, of what we want and is really setting the stage for all of this policy effort and including the, the zoning and, um, design guidelines to follow. So with that, I'm gonna start by jumping into the land use section here. So this chapter covers existing land use. It covers the development potential that exists downtown. And it does propose a, um, set of new land uses. So we do have four new land use and zoning districts that are proposed as part of this plan. And it looks at economic vitality, um, and does have some key strategies to help achieve the anticipated level of development and with a close eye on housing. So of those development areas, um, the plan is broken up into opportunity areas. And those are the red polygons that you see on the small map there. Um, but these are the areas where there is the most change anticipated. And this is based on public feedback, um, the core area of the courthouse square and railroad square, underutilized sites, and where we want to catalyze development. And so the, the goal of the plan and the projection is that we could add seven thousand new housing units. And then also a variety of other, um, uses, including office and retail and industrial. So of the land use designations, there are four new land designations that we are proposing. So the urban core, um, is, is really the most intense area where we would have the tallest buildings in that core mixed use area. The station area is really more visitor oriented and is, is really around the station itself and looks at, um, adding housing next to transit. And then we have some, some new areas that, um, will be a make or mixed use, which is really looking at doing a light industrial, uh, live-work situation with more of a village feel. So more of a neighborhood feel there. And then we have neighborhood mixed use, which will be, um, mixed with pockets of supportive retail, but really residential at its core. One of the major key moves in the plan and within this land use chapter is the move to floor area ratio. So the plan does envision removing height and density requirements and moving towards a process where we look at, um, the, the height and the, um, providing flexibility so that depending on the size of the property, um, developers can identify how tall or, um, how, um, wide of a structure that can be there. So it's, it's kind of a hybrid, um, four-based code approach. But the goal is to really increase density in those opportunity areas and, um, preserve the historic neighborhoods and to allow greater flexibility for development to occur. The land use chapter also really talks a lot about housing and affordable housing. Um, it still leaves the door open to all types of housing. This front plan does not change any of our affordable, um, housing policies or inclusionary ordinances. Um, but it does encourage affordability through smaller units, which can be affordable by design, um, live-work units and allowing for more home-based, but also larger units. So, um, three bedrooms plus that we can help attract families for, um, a growing workforce downtown. So with that, I'm gonna move into mobility. So the mobility chapter is, um, really set up with our, um, highlighting our circulation network and is looking at enhancing the east-west connection through the downtown to the, um, railroad square area. And also looks at wayfinding and really identifying, um, connections and activation opportunities. So it largely builds on our most recently updated bike and pedestrian master plan and, um, does look at some of those key linkages and with a focus on the Prince Memorial Greenway. And then also some, um, some interesting wayfinding through, uh, for instance, the mall. So looking at the connection through the mall and, um, setting up a policy structure where there can be a conversation about different programming and hours and wayfinding to be able to, um, really connect the downtown area. And then this also looks at transit and being able to connect the, the train and the transit mall with the rest of the, of the downtown communities as well. And then one of the major key moves of this chapter is related to parking. So the plan does envision eliminating the minimum parking requirements. And this is not just for the downtown core area, but for the entire plan area. And this doesn't mean that parking would not be produced. It really just increases that flexibility for developers to build the amount of parking that they feel the market demands and also what is consistent with, um, financing. Because we know that, um, financing still requires, uh, some level of parking to be developed for residential development. Moving into urban design, this chapter really sets the framework to guide development in a way where we create vibrant and, um, vibrant and pleasing pedestrian areas that we have, um, a focus on our historic resources and, um, and are doing the wayfinding and, um, design standards that are required to accomplish the vision for the plan. So this includes a requirement for active ground floor uses. And so that would, um, create some symbols on our, on our maps. So the small map shows a little snippet of it, but for certain areas of, um, the planned area, there would be requirements for, um, facade changes, street furniture, um, different design elements instead of defining what type of use needs to be on the ground floor. So we wanted to provide flexibility on how those ground floors are activated without, um, requiring, for, for instance, retail or restaurant uses on that ground floor. There's also, um, a close look on the transition areas. So as we, um, grow downtown and have more density and intense uses, there needs to be a close perspective looking at the, the transition between what could be a very dense or twenty-story building and single-family bungalow right across the street. So this set of policy really strives to buffer that transition and to provide some guidance to developers and to the community on what to expect. So it does include, um, a variety of different things. One is a setback. Um, so a setback of ten feet, um, and then a step back. So at, um, three stories, developers would be required to step back, um, an additional ten feet. And then again, at six stories, we would have a daylight plane requirement. So this is really, um, creating, um, or discouraging the, what could be a, um, a very monolithic building that could be across from, um, single-family homes. And we've seen this success in other urban areas and, um, have really refined these policies with the help of the community and, um, and the development community. So I'll be getting into those refinements a little bit later as well. And then this section also talks a lot about parks and civic spaces and really rethinks, um, how those are developed and what would be required for these. And then it also looks at historic resources, which is a, a vital component of the, the vision of this plan and how we see, um, as a community, how we see downtown moving forward. So, um, we have identified certain sites within the downtown that are considered catalyst sites within the specific plan and the environmental impact report. And those catalyst sites shown in, um, the dark magenta on the top map have had site-specific studies done, um, for historic resources in order to help streamline development on those sites themselves. And that is a mix of, um, city-owned property and private. And, um, the map towards the bottom here describes the age of the structures within our opportunity areas. So we know we have, um, a lot of structures in these opportunity areas that are age-eligible but have not been surveyed. So the plan does call for the city to survey these areas. And we actually do have grant funding and are moving forward on, um, doing that survey in the next year. And then finally, um, looking at, um, public services and sustainability. Um, this is actually the second-to-last chapter. Um, but this is really looking at the nuts and bolts of our, um, services, public services and the environmental framework. And this looks at infrastructure and, um, some of the hazards and emergency issues that we have downtown. And so first, we did take a very deep dive into, um, the utilities and, um, infrastructure needed to support the level of development that's envisioned within the plan. And that's detailed within, um, the environmental impact report as well. And, um, and there are a financing mechanisms identified. In addition, there was also a close look at the issue of air quality. Um, because we two, we do have two major, um, freeways running through the downtown area as well as some stationary sources. It was important for the planning effort to really identify, um, specific policies to really minimize the impact to sensitive uses that could occur around some of these areas. And so, um, air quality was also detailed within the environmental impact report. And then, of course, because we live where we live, um, there is a section related to, um, emergency response and preparation and, um, looking at, um, fires, earthquakes and, and all those things that, um, we are susceptible to here in our community. And then financing and implementation, um, because this is a specific plan, under state law, we are required to identify the funding mechanisms and tools to be able to fund the infrastructure required in the plan. So this, um, this chapter really goes through that in detail and also identifies the, um, the phasing that could occur. So we did look to see over the twenty years, what type of development would occur in five-year increments and have, um, identified in the phasing plan so that the financing and infrastructure would be closely aligned. In addition to that, uh, the financing section was updated from the two thousand seven planning effort to really recognize a lot of the new funding mechanisms that are in line now, including the renewal enterprise district, um, and the designation as a federal opportunity zone. So with that, I'm gonna close, uh, right here and just ask if there's questions that, um, have been, have come up at this point before I move into some of the issues, um, that we want to discuss that were brought up in the staff report.
Commissioners, um, as soon as I can see you, uh, any questions right now? Or maybe you can just let me know verbally if you're gonna have any questions for Ms. Lyle before we move on to other issues that we'll be speaking to? Not hearing anybody, Ms. Lyle, so.
Nope, I'm seeing some heads nodding, so okay, we will keep moving on.
Okay, good.
So, um, we did receive, uh, quite a few number of comments. We, um, did a lot of outreach, which is outlined in the, the staff report. And we wanted to highlight some of the issues of importance. And in the staff report, it's in detail, but those issues are really, um, the creek activation, uh, looking at the St. Rose neighborhood specifically and some of the areas that we've identified where we could, um, change land use and FAR opportunities. And then also just wanted to take a refined look at, at parking as well. So first, we did present before the Waterways Advisory Committee on, on two different occasions and did receive a lot of feedback on, um, some opportunities that the plan had missed. And so as a staff team, we went back and, and really tried to make sure that this plan reflected what, um, we've heard from the community as well and from the Waterways Advisory Committee. So it's part of that, there are some new policies that are proposed as outlined, uh, attached to your staff report. But I, I wanted to recognize, um, a new change as well, which is identifying certain areas along the Prince Memorial Greenway that we could require activation. And so this would basically be a requirement for development that, um, that builds adjacent to the Prince Memorial Greenway to activate the creek area. So it, it really, um, strives to move eyes onto the creek and, um, make sure that the, the use is paying attention to the creek. And this is combined with that policy effort to bolster the safety and, um, the city efforts to, um, to overcome some of the issues that are prevalent now with the, there is, there are maintenance issues, there are safety issues. Um, and there's a whole host of, um, solutions that are currently being explored. And so that really does need to come hand in hand with the development occurring on that, um, on those frontages. So the activation is not proposed along the whole Prince Memorial Greenway, um, because there are areas where there, there's areas where there's already vegetation or there's a difference in the grade and there's just no, um, ability to access the creek for certain sites. So the, the staff report in this slide identifies the three areas where staff is proposing to that creek activation. And then, um, staff is also proposing a change to floor area ratio in some key sites within the downtown as well. Um, one is on Sonoma Avenue, so right at Santa Rosa Avenue and Sonoma Avenue. Um, there is a collection of, of properties there that are in a key gateway to the planned area and could be, um, a potential site for increased development and increased height and intensity. So that is why we're proposing that floor area ratio. In addition, the, the B Street corridor, um, south of the residential part or south and east of the residential part of the St. Rose District, um, we have identified also as an area to increase the floor area ratio allowance. And, um, that area is really identified because it backs up to a parking garage, which already has, um, quite a bit of height to it. Um, so that area would be consistent with, um, some of the other proposals within the plan. And then lastly, looking at the West Third Street area off of Dutton and, um, moving that to a neighborhood mixed use, which would reflect more consistency with, um, the other land uses within that area. And the other thing we just wanted to note is on parking. We have tried to be very, very clear with the community when we did outreach that the, the parking, the move on parking is to, um, remove the parking minimums for all areas of downtown, not just the core area. And so I just wanted to highlight that one more time. This is consistent with what we talked about back in December of twenty nineteen with your commission and the city council. Um, this is in line with the vision of the plan, uh, and creating a more, more multimodal street grid and, and opportunities for transit and biking and walking. Um, but we just wanted to be clear that, um, there, there But we just wanted to be clear that there will be no parking minimums even in the residential neighborhoods. And then the other thing I wanted to note, we've had quite a few conversations specifically with the St. Rose neighborhood. And I wanted to highlight some of their concerns, which I'm sure you've seen in their comments through the process. But their concerns include the type of intense development that's identified as potential within the opportunity areas adjacent to the preservation district. And they are also concerned with how to soften that transition from those properties that could develop along College or along Hillsburg Avenue or B Street, and how that would interact with the historic bungalows and residential character that's there now. So staff has identified some additional areas since the staff report was released where we would like to add the neighborhood transition policies. And we've identified some properties that we would like to not have a floor area ratio for. But let me explain that in detail. So this line of homes here between, this is Glen, and between the more commercial properties on that face College, these are single-family homes, most of which are considered to be contributors to the Historic and Preservation District and are right now in the proposed plan identified for a floor area ratio of three, which would, originally, we had intended that because of the parcels along College, they could assemble and be able to do something together. But as the St. Rose District neighborhood has pointed out, these properties are historic, they are considered to be contributors. We really do not want those properties to redevelop. We do want to retain that historic and heritage. And so our staff proposal is to not include a floor area ratio for these properties here. In addition, we would like to also add a transition zone behind these properties. So as properties develop on Hillsburg Avenue, they would need to transition to the properties that are along B Street. So there would be a transition zone here and a transition zone behind them as well. So those two changes are the highlights and our staff recommendation that were not in the staff report. And I can go through that in more detail if you would like. The other issue that the St. Rose District has pointed out is the issues around supportive housing and homelessness. And we understand that there is negotiations going on with the county and hotel right on the Santa Rosa Avenue area that, so this neighborhood is flanked with support uses. That being said, our staff perspective is that the specific plan is really not the tool to alleviate those issues and that there are a multitude of other more nimble opportunities happening at the moment within other areas of the government that will be more adept to respond to those concerns. So because this is a long-range plan and more high-level, we did not feel that there was anything of value the specific plan could add to really help alleviate those issues that they're experiencing at this moment. But we will continue to work with that neighborhood on the site-specific issues that are happening. And then the last issue that I wanted to note and a change since our staff report was released is looking at the setbacks that are identified in the urban design section. So we are rethinking how development occurs downtown. And as I noted, we are working on updating the zoning code and design guidelines, which will be moving forward once we know the result of our specific plan. And one of those key things is looking at the urban framework that we're going to need to create. And so we have already identified that a setback between properties can go, instead of 10 or 5 feet on the side, can go back to a zero, zero setback. But the one thing that we've identified is the rear setback may also need additional flexibility. So we would like to offer the planning commission the option to reduce this rear setback to a 0 to 5-foot setback. And we do foresee a potential of requiring a 5-foot setback where it's adjacent to residential, not all residential, certain residential. So for instance, those historic bungalows or some of those preservation district boundaries. But that is something that we can flush out in the zoning code. And for purposes of the specific plan, we would just like to exercise the flexibility to further refine that in the code itself. So our recommendation is just to remove the 10-foot and replace that, as stated here on the slide, with 0 to 5 feet. So before I move into the EIR, I wanted to stop and see if there's questions about some of these new refinements as proposed.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Lyle on these refinements?
Chair Cisco, I have a question.
Great, go for it.
Commissioner Duggan, okay. So Amy, you said on the land use and FAR change slide that your recommendation is to remove the FAR recommendations for the houses on the north side of Lincoln Street. And from some of the correspondence from the St. Rose people, they've indicated there are also contributing structures on B Street all the way down to, I think, Seventh Street. There's buildings that are part of the district and contributing structures. And you're recommending that you still want to maintain the FAR designations to those sites?
Yes, along B Street, yes. Some of those properties are contributors, but it is our staff recommendation that they stay within. The requirements are still in place in accordance to the Preservation District. There are still policies in place that require the historic evaluations to go through and review through the Cultural Heritage Board. The homes along Lincoln Street are a little bit different because they are all, almost all of them are considered to be contributors, and they are all single-family homes there. Whereas B Street is a little bit of a mix. So although there is a floor area ratio proposed, it may not be realized on a site-by-site basis.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Vice Chair Weeks?
I actually have two questions, Amy, and let me follow up on Commissioner Duggan's question. If, or when the historic survey is done, if you find that more of those properties are contributors, would you come back and revise the station area-specific plan? Or is there some way you can write in flexibility that would enable you to do that? That make sense?
It does. So I think what I'm saying is that although they may be identified as having the option to build differently or redevelop in some way, the protections are still in place and envisioned to stay in place. That would require the Cultural Heritage Board review. That would prohibit the demolition of historic structures. And that would require those properties to stay within the Historic Preservation District itself. So with those protections, we feel comfortable that any properties that would be considered contributing would still have the protections required, so they would not be eligible for development.
Okay, thank you.
But it's hard, it's hard to go through the whole plan and go case by case.
Right.
So that's the difficulty.
And then my second question had to do with the parking minimums and the response that you got from the different neighborhoods that there is not going to be parking required. What was the response? I mean, yeah, what was the response?
We tried to be very clear that that was the proposal. We did not receive a lot of response, which is why we continue to highlight this change that is being proposed. I will say that most of our preservation districts are already developed. There are not a lot of opportunity sites, there are not a lot of vacant sites that could be developed. The only thing that could occur is increasing the density on certain sites through accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units. But there's not a lot of development potential in those areas. So perhaps there is not the consternation and concern over this change of minimum parking requirements.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Collier?
Just one quick clarifying question. So reducing the, or getting rid of entirely the FAR for Lincoln Street, the ones that we're talking about, that is not going to have any impact on the FAR on College, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Those will retain their FAR.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Carter?
Just to follow on to Commissioner Collier's question. Can you clarify for me why the transition symbol was not added to those northeast Lincoln properties between those and the College Avenue properties that will remain with the higher FAR?
We certainly could add it there. I think that is an opportunity that we could add it.
Anyone else? Yeah, Commissioner Collier?
Kind of building on Commissioner Carter's question. So can you explain a little bit more about with that, with that transition area, how would that, how could that potentially impact the development of those College Avenue FAR? Is that because of the step-down requirements are going to be greater for those transition areas?
Yeah, I can go back to that slide real quick and show you real quick what that would look like. So this little diagram is pulled out of the plan, it's not very big, but I'll show you what it looks like. So as that transition zone policy plays out, so if it were to be added on those properties behind College, they would be required to step down. So they would back on to those single-family homes in a way where they have a daylight plane, so they'd have this 45-degree plane over six stories if they were to go that tall. And then at three stories, they would need to set back an additional 10 feet. So it is meant to kind of soften that impact as it would back up to those properties. And I think that would be appropriate because we do have that transition policy zone along the back of College across Glen Street, along Lincoln. So we can certainly add it here as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And right now I can't see you, so just call out if you have a question.
Chair Cisco, I have one more to follow on Commissioner Collier's question. Would you also add, I can't find that transition zone map, Amy, but would you also add the same transition thing behind the properties that face onto College in the Cherry Street District, across Mendocino from the St. Rose District?
So that is a proposal that's in the staff report, is to add some new transition zone policies in the Cherry Street District.
Specifically behind the parcels that front onto College and back onto the Cherry Street parcels?
We reviewed that, but as a staff team, we didn't feel it was necessary because they had, there is a street between those properties and the homes on Cherry Street. So their backyards would not be adjacent to each other.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm not hearing anybody else with a question. So Ms. Lyle, you're going to move on to environmental review now?
Yes, so just very briefly, I did want to go over the final environmental impact report. So this does cover all different issues. There was an initial study released back in January of 2020. And that did look at each of the issues and areas within CEQA that was required. And then an environmental impact report was completed after that point. And really, the point of this document is to really disclose any significant environmental impacts that would be present as a result of the implementation of this plan. It is done programmatically. So unlike a project, this is taken a little bit of a higher level and looking at the level of development that could occur and kind of looking at it on a more equalized basis over the entire planned area. And so any development that would occur under this plan would need to be consistent with the specific plan in order to utilize this environmental impact report as its CEQA document. So it is a very powerful tool to help streamline development. And there are a lot of state law provisions that look at specific plans and transit areas and offer that streamlining opportunity. So this is a little bit different because it is also a subsequent EIR. So it's looking at the original 2007 environmental impact report that was prepared and looking at the delta of change that this specific plan is proposing. So it is a little bit of a different baseline than other specific plans, but I just wanted to be clear on how that actually works. And then for a summary of findings, the EIR really did look at some key areas. And those that were found to be significant were air quality, historic resources, and parks and recreation. But there were policies and mitigation incorporated into the plan and the EIR, which has reduced those levels of significance down to, down to an achievable level as long as those policies and mitigations are accomplished. And then we did release the draft environmental impact report for 45 days. We did have a hearing with your planning commission back in August. And we did receive one formal comment, of which the final EIR does respond to each concern within that. And the final EIR also includes a response to planning commission and those items heard at that hearing back in August. And then also incorporated into the final EIR is the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, which is a required component of the CEQA analysis. So are there any questions on the environmental impact report before I move on to the last piece?
Commissioners, any questions? Just go ahead and call out and I'll recognize you. I'm not hearing any right yet.
So the last piece are the collection of general plan amendments. So the only general plan amendments that are proposed tonight are those that are required for consistency with the specific plan. And that's mainly because our existing general plan recognizes the land use that were within the 2007 specific plan. So we are basically just replacing those land uses. And then there are some other areas of consistency that we've identified and is attached to your staff report. So one is really the move to the floor area ratio. And again, those addition of those land uses. There is also some minor changes in urban design and in the housing element to really accommodate and provide direction for the certain, certainly underutilized sites. And then also very small updates to transportation element, economic vitality, noise, and public services. So we really do, did a deep dive on the general plan to make sure that that we do have full consistency throughout our plans. And then with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have now, and I'll let you carry forward with the, with the public hearing as well. So I will stop my screen share at this time.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions before we move on to? Okay, Commissioners, any other questions before we move on to, yes, Commissioner Duggan?
Yeah, I'm trying to look up the text change you have in the information packet about goal policy MOB one point one about editing that and adding, okay, so you added Santa Rosa Avenue and East Street and calling them boulevards. And then here on the transportation element slide forty eight, you call them two lane regional streets. Is there a difference there? And what the difference, what is the difference?
So you, I just want to be clear on your question. I'm not surprised that we said something different in two different places, but I just want to make sure I give you the right answer. Can you note those one more time for me?
Yeah, so in the, in the packet of changes, the proposed edits to the plan, there's a change to MOB one point one in the mobility chapter. Can't figure out the page, but it's a policy and it wants to call out specifically Santa Rosa Avenue and East Street as boulevards. And then in the general plan amendment, you note Santa Rosa Avenue and East Street to be identified as two lane regional streets.
I can look into that and and respond after.
And also, I had a question before this slide, but just why those two streets specifically? Are they, are they the only boulevard or regional streets in the plan area?
Thank you. Well, I'll reserve that.
Any other questions while she's researching? No, okay. Ms. Lyle, are you comfortable with us moving on to the public hearing while you do what you need to do?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so with that, this is the public hearing tonight. If you are on Zoom, you will be applying the raise hand button in order to be acknowledged. If you're calling in, dial star nine and our host will acknowledge you, ask you to unmute. And you'll have three minutes. There'll be a little timer on the screen that'll do the countdown for you. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask our host if we have anybody in the queue.
Yes, Chair Cisco, we have a couple of hands raised, so we're going to go in order of when they click their hands. So we're going to go with Andrew Hill first. We're going to give you permissions to speak. At that time, that means that you can unmute your microphone. And once you start, if you can state your name for the record, we'll start the timer.
Actually, I'm a member of the consulting team, and so I don't need to make a public comment.
Okay, perfect. Yes, if you're a member of the consultant team, if you can lower your hands, but thank you for letting us know, Andrew. Go ahead and with that, next we have Jean Kapalachuk.
Hi, thank you, members of the planning commission, Jean Kapalachuk, eight forty three Second Street at Santa Rosa. I'm representing Chiquita Properties, which is a collection of properties in the Maxwell Court area, Maxwell Drive and Dutton. And I did submit some comments to Amy. First, let me say that I appreciate the update of the plan. I think it's considerably more creative than the the plan it is updating. And I think it's a fairly exciting plan for future development for the city. In regards to particular properties of concern, it's a collection that the acreage is four point seven four acres and it's identified as an opportunity area, given the size of the properties and the fact that it's, it's in single ownership. There are two areas of concern. I think both have been minimally addressed by staff, but I have some concerns relative to the detail. One is the extension of Maxwell, of Donahue Street, and that's a carryover from the other plan. I think that that may be okay if I'm understanding staff correctly relative to it being a local street or it could be a private street with an easement over it. That could work for development options, but I don't see that level of detail in the plan. The other, it has to do with a civic space. There's civic space symbol on the property that takes over a quarter, a half acre. The plan didn't modify that as a potential civic space. I pointed out in my comments that the Jeter Park is only four hundred feet away. So it being potential from a standpoint of my client and his terms of his development options, if that could just be fleshed out with a little bit more detail. Other than that, again, I think the plan is, is a very good improvement to the other plan, but I would like a certain level of detail so I can translate that to my client in regards to his development options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapalachuk.
Right, Chair Cisco, we have a couple more hands raised. Give me one moment. Next, I'm going to give permissions to Denise to unmute. If you can please state your full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Denise Hill. I'm in the St. Rose neighborhood. We've lived here for approximately thirty years. I just wanted to speak to the fact that there were quite a few actually contributor structures on the B Street areas that are still have a fairly high FAR rating. And it really concerns me because to me it means that there's potential that the thought is that those structures will be torn down and replaced with something that is has a FAR rating when indeed they are contributors. There are twelve contributors on B Street that were originally identified in the cultural resource survey done by the city. And those contributors include a couple of medical buildings built in the thirties that are the only other arc deco building besides the Rosenberg Building in our city. They include a couple of notable original pioneers, their homes back from the eighteen hundreds. They include the Saturday Afternoon Club, the first women's club in Santa Rosa. And so it does concern me, although we had a great working relationship with Amy and I really appreciate the hard effort she did reaching out to our neighborhood. It does concern me that these structures have the FAR rating, which to me is a green light for developers. And although we do have historical guidelines, they are exactly that, guidelines, and tend to be pushed aside a lot of times when we've got developers coming through our neighborhood. I mean, but let's face it, we have historic guidelines and we're going to have the Caritas Village destroy potentially six historic structures that were contributors to our neighborhood. So the guidelines don't, aren't an end all when it comes to protecting the the historic structures in a preservation district in the city. So I do hope that the commissioners will look at that and maybe back off on the properties that are contributors, mark contributors. Like I say, there's twelve of them and only six non-contributors in the area that's on B Street. So I really hope you'll give that a good hard look and preserve our city's history. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Denise.
All right, next we have Roy Lewison. If you can please state your full name for the record.
My name is Roy Lewison. I also, as Denise, live in the St. Rose Historic District. I want to thank the commission for allowing me the opportunity to speak and especially thank Amy for her openness and a speed of responding to my questions and concerns. And all I can do is really reaffirm what Denise has said. I counted thirteen. She has twelve properties ranging from a nineteen twenties bungalow to a magnificent Victorian, three story Victorian, which I'm sure most of you know, next to Brew Cafe. And yeah, I think that because these properties are my clock has stopped. Am I, am I still on? Can you still hear me?
Yes, you can. Yeah, I don't know why it's stopped, but we can still hear it. Now it's going again.
Maybe St. Rose Neighborhood has given me a few more moments. But I counted up there two hundred and ninety nine properties that are going to have the new designation of core mixed use in the downtown. And out of these, as I said, twelve to thirteen are in the St. Rose Historic District, own B Street. And I just feel that the historic value that they add to the city and the attractiveness of which any new development will be able to advertise being close to such beauty would merit them actually being removed completely from the, the core mixed use and the FAR designation. As I said, yes, on paper, these properties could be protected, but why risk it? Really, why risk these places? I mean, I can't, there's a, at six sixteen B Street, across the street from my home is a, a building that was moved there from another part of Santa Rosa dating back to the eighteen eighties. And I just cringe at the thought of that being demolished. I know it seems farfetched, but as Denise said, guidelines are not written in stone. And the power of, I come from San Francisco originally. I know the power of developers. And I really truly want to do what I can to preserve what is a preservation district, which will, which will actually attract people to live near here. Everyone wants, I came up with an ad. You know, live in the St. Rose Historic District, five minutes from downtown. Have the best of both worlds. So developers will benefit from protecting our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewison.
And next we have Natalie Balfour. And it appears unfortunately Natalie does not have an updated version of Zoom, so it is not allowing us to give you permission to speak. If you'd like, you can give us a call. There are multiple methods in which you can contact, or if you wanted to give an update and get back into the meeting, you can re-raise your hand. But at this time, I'm not able to give you the permissions to speak. So until then, we're going to go ahead and move to Michelle Gervais.
Hi, thank you very much, Commissioners and staff, for a fantastic job on this really important document. So much better work on an already good idea. My, a very quick question and comment, and I'm sorry I didn't get to this sooner. But I had a question about the catalyst sites. And I had seen previously that the Smart Site and the Canos whom I represented for some time used to be designated as a catalyst site through city council goal setting. And, and yet was not in this current draft. And I'm sure there's good reasons for it, but I didn't understand those and I was curious about that. And also I just was looking for the definition of activity generating along the creek. And that, that can mean many different things. And so I was, I just would, I'll look forward to following up on that and I felt I should mention it now for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bay.
All right, next we have Nelson Lamelli.
Hello, planning commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So I want to make my comments really quick. My name is Nelson. I live in Santa Rosa over by the fairgrounds. And I just glancing through the, the plan and looking at the visuals that were provided by the, the team in terms of what Santa Rosa can become, especially in the downtown and on the Sonoma Avenue areas. I was really struck by how beautiful that looked. It's one of those situations where I have been considering leaving Santa Rosa for a long time now due to a number of things, including the constant wildfires that we're facing and the lack of meaningful development and anything to do in downtown. And so looking at that was really inspiring to see that. And I hope that we can convert Santa Rosa into that, a city that looks like that as a way to keep and attract younger residents and people who will be working downtown. And so I hope that, I wanted to provide this comment to just let you know that this kind of, this kind of development and this kind of plan is something that I am really attracted to and I hope to see Santa Rosa become. And I just want to let you know that I hope we can start implementing some of these elements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have caller with the last board at six two five two, I believe, and you were able to reconnect from earlier. So I'm going to give you permission to speak and if you can state your name for the record. And caller, just so you're aware, it is showing that you are muted on our side. I'm trying to prompt it to unmute, but it looks like we're having difficulties with that. Chair Cisco, can you just give us one moment?
Yeah, that's fine.
Chair Cisco, while I look up some permission settings to see if there's something we can do to help them unmute their phone, we can move on to the next caller.
Okay, that sounds fine. Thank you.
So the next, the next attendee, which is Greg Parker.
Okay, Greg Parker.
Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, I'll try to make this quick. I've got a kind of a funky connection, so it might be going in and out. I want to talk about the setbacks, the original setback from one to two stories. And we've got two parcels along Lincoln Street, three twenty, which is already in the planning stages, but if this is a permanent thing, they might pull out and come back in again. We'd like to see instead of a ten foot setback on the first, between the first and second, like a twenty. When, when the Moore Center went in, we got them to, to step back all the way on the entire historic parcel and it's two stories and it's nice. You don't see the building behind because it goes like by sixty feet. You're not going to go there. But if we could get twenty feet and bring it back from the street a little more, it wouldn't look like a big box that's around all these single family things next to it. That's number one. Three fifty, the same thing. They're, they've never come in with a plan, but they're on the corner of Glen and Lincoln. There's a parking lot that's in the historic district and it'll be the same thing like three twenty, I would imagine. And I'm wondering if we can do a, like a twenty foot on the front and, and then keep the ten foot along Glen Street. So it, it kind of looks a little more of a, got a little more shape to it instead of a big box. And then the third ones I want to talk about are on B Street. And I second what Denise and Roy have said about the contributors on that, that street. Right down from Hotel Azura, there's six thirty and six thirty four B Street. They're both single, single fam, uh, single story bungalows. They've got the Moore Center. I guess it's six one five Hildberg now. On the south side, which is two stories and it, it kind of putting them in a hole right now. The Hotel Azura is on the other side and that's three stories. If they get something on the back that goes up four or five stories, they're just going to be in a cave back there. They'll never see the light. I'd rather see the same thing with the transition zone behind it. That'll help. But I'd like to see more of a setback on the first floor, maybe. I don't, yeah, I'd love to see twenty feet just to give them some space there because they're going to, they're just going to be stuck. And that's, those are the most important ones to me. I'd like to, I'd just like to see this, the setback. I'd like to, I'd just like to see the setbacks a little, a little farther along our streets, especially Lincoln. When you got a bunch of single-family homes there, you don't get much if you got a box sticking right out onto the street. So thank you very much and thank you, Amy. Looks like I disappeared.
Yeah.
Chair Cisco, if you can hold on one second, we're having a little issue.
No, we can hold on. Would you like, well, we shouldn't take a break during public hearing, so yeah, we'll hang on.
Thank you.
Chair, Chair Cisco, bear with me, the slide disappeared, so we need to get it back. One moment.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Chair Cisco, we've got it back up and then we're going to share it.
Okay.
Hopefully it'll stick this time.
Okay.
All right, so we got a caller online. If you press star six, that'll be able to unmute you. Perfect, you're unmuted now, so if you can state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Great, thank you. My name is Natalie Balfour. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Airport Business Center, which owns fifty Old Courthouse Square and the building that the Roxy Stadium fourteen is in. We submitted two letters to the Planning Commission just about an hour ago, one containing our three requests surrounding the plan itself and the other lists our concerns and comments regarding the subsequent EIR. We really didn't want to write the letter about the EIR. We spent way too much time and energy and money researching it in the high level of detail that we did. We felt we had no other recourse. We feel ignored and disregarded. It is important to mention that staff has been incredibly available and helpful, but our requests were not actually taken into consideration and we are never paid, we were never provided an explanation as to why. Had a request been incorporated at any point along the way, our participation would have ended. We are hoping it can end tonight. I need to stress, we are big supporters of the goals and vision of the proposed plan. We are just asking for three small changes, none of which would affect the goals or overall vision of the plan in any way. The first is to adopt a policy to keep parking garage number five and parking garage number twelve exclusively as public garages. The second is to adopt a policy stating that any ground floor space currently being utilized as office shall be allowed to retain such use now and in the future without any alteration to the building. The third is to, is to officially designate fifty Old Courthouse Square as a site to be preserved for employment-oriented development as stated in policy LU three point four, which states that it is a goal and a policy to preserve some sites in Courthouse Square for employment-oriented development. The, the first policy regarding the garages, specifically Garage Five is the most-used public garage downtown and is right behind our building fifty Old Courthouse Square. We rely on it to stay in existence. Garage Twelve provides parking for Roxy Stadium fourteen. If the garage is gone, the stadium cannot exist in that location. The next two policies have to do with protecting office use. The plan as it stands is wonderful and creates a lot of space for retail and restaurant use, but it does not prevent, it does not protect office use on the ground floor. We realize that offices do not inherently create an active facade, but that is not, but that is for a reason. Office users do not want people drawn to the building they are in right in front of their, right in front of their office windows. Things like putting awnings, chairs, tables, and creating public spaces would greatly injure office use. If office use on the ground floor is not protected, this plan will not succeed. It cannot rely upon retail restaurants and services to account for the eight hundred thousand square feet of commercial development this plan is proposing. If you allow office to continue to exist as it is, the downside is the facade might not be active. But if there is no office, the downside is that.
If we can interrupt you really quickly? I know that you can't see, we can't see the timer on your side, so Chair Cisco, if you want to do a lot of any time, they weren't aware that the timer went off?
Oh, okay, um, the cell for, you just need to wrap up like within twenty seconds here. So we, apparently we had a letter and I'm going to have, I'll have staff respond to the requests in your letter, so.
Okay, cool, I'm, I'm at the last like one sentence.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. If you allow office use to continue to exist as, as it is, the downside is the facade might not be active, but the spaces will be filled. If you do not protect office and there isn't enough retail to match supply, you will have vacant ground floor spaces. Vacancy is much worse than plain facades, both in terms of aesthetics as well as safety. And that's it. I appreciate you letting me present our requests and, and your time and consideration.
Yeah, I'm sorry that we had the, the technical issues with your, with your call-in, so thanks for your comments.
Oh, that's okay, I got it.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair Cisco. Next we have Bobby Lopez. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself and start when you're ready.
Hello, hi, hi everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Good evening, commissioners and staff. Thank you so much for your time. This is Bobby Lopez from BAFCA. We submitted a letter. I just want to again stress that we are big supporters of moving forward with some plan because I think we can all agree that housing is very needed. We did have a couple of questions in the plan that we're happy to sort of engage offline or here, whatever's easier. But we're really curious about sort of the analysis around ride-hailing services in the plan, the analysis around state density bonus impacts and the ability to, for the city to meet infrastructure demands because of state density bonus or just the impacts of it. But I think the larger conversation for us has been around displacement. According to the DISIR, the twenty nineteen Affordable Housing and Anti-Displacement Strategy of the plan, my understanding is the area plan is thirty-four percent Latino, thirty-five percent is renter with fifty-three percent of those renters being rent burdened. And with Santa Rosa sort of in where it's at right now with its rent protection laws and now being a very hot market, our question is, does this plan truly avoid the impact of displacement? And what additional things can be put in the plan to mitigate that displacement? Undoubtedly, Santa Rosa is a hot market. We've seen that it steadily has increased in the last ten years. And according to the August twenty twenty Housing Market Report, buyer demand has skyrocketed because of more affluent buyers, buyers moving out of San Francisco. And so I, I do think that while this plan talks about aggressively in supporting different strategies, I think there, there is some room to, to actually put into place strategies that ensure that it's not just affordable by design, but there is more affordable housing. Santa Rosa only met ten percent of its RENA goals for extremely low and very low-income housing. And so the question becomes how much, what else needs to happen to meet a hundred percent of that goal? And one of the ideas that we put into our letter is looking at the affordability and the percent of affordability and publicly-owned parcels. When there is a public-private partnership, that's a great opportunity to ask for higher levels of affordability. I mean, another thing that I've seen in other area plans as well is, is sort of the parking ratios that are being offered for developers. In other plans, I've seen it be incentivizing for offering more affordable housing as, as an option. So, so just, you know, please kindly take a look at our letter and again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And Chair Cisco, that concludes everyone with their hand raised at this time.
Okay. And we don't have any other call-ins that you can see?
Correct.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close our public hearing. I'm going to ask staff, I assume staff, you might like to, to take a break to compile your answers? Or are you comfortable going forward? But what will work for you?
I'm comfortable.
Good?
If, if you need a break, we can go for it, but otherwise I'm, I'm ready.
I just thought you got a lot of information here, so. Great, great. So you, you heard the, the questions from the public? If you wouldn't mind just responding and I'll try to keep track and add in if, if any of them get mixed, missed, sorry.
Great. And then also I can respond to Commissioner Duggan's question as well.
Good, yes.
So let me start with that. So the, the general plan and the specific plan have two different types of designations. So the general plan does have boulevards and regional streets, but the specific, but there are also parkways and boulevards that are under regional streets. So those two corridors you mentioned are reflecting the road diets. So I think the most recent one is E Street, where there was a road diet down to two lanes with bicycle lanes. So that's what the plan is reflecting there. Okay, so I'll start with Jean Kapoleczk's comments related to the road designation. We, we have talked about that and we have offered to connect her with our public work staff to get into more detail on what that road segment is designated and what requirements are, are, will be required for that. And then she also mentioned the civic space symbology that's on the map in the west end area there. And I will say that all of the civic space symbols on our maps are approximate. They do not define that those underlying parcels are where those would occur. They are general, general direction as to where those could occur. So although she would like more detail on what that would be required, it is really up to those sites as they develop in those areas. And the plan does include some level of detail about the different types of plazas and parks that could be envisioned and what components we would like to see developed as part of those. But I can contact her offline to see if there is more detail that she would like that we could supply in another way. But at the specific plan level, we do want to keep that more of a general direction and not require specific parcels to do something very specific. And then Denise had comments around the floor area ratio in the Preservation District with a specially, special attention to B Street. And those are some of the issues that I've noted and that you've had questions on as well. And so I'll look to you all for direction on, on those comments and on, on B Street specifically. But our, our staff recommendation is to keep those B Street properties within a floor area ratio, knowing that there are other protections in place. And we are also working on the zoning and the design guidelines to increase the clarity on what is required for developments in those areas, what is required as far as historic preservation and providing clear guidance to the development community and expectations for, for the neighborhoods. And then I think Roy had very similar comments. I do like his advertising campaign about having the best of both worlds. And then Michelle Gervais had asked a question about catalyst sites. And the two specific sites that she noted, we did not include as catalyst sites within the plan because there is already development proposed for those two sites. So the catalyst sites that are developed within the specific plan are, at this moment, no development is proposed. And we identified them to be able to further streamline and do those site-specific historic surveys as part of the Environmental Impact Report. So that is the only reason they are not identified as catalyst. We do have many projects that are underway at this moment, which will also serve as catalyst sites, but will not technically be designated in the plan as catalyst. And she also had a question about activity generating and whether that is clearly defined. And I would say we, we do have some general language within the specific plan about what is activity generating and what we hope to achieve. But we are trying to provide flexibility on how those spaces are, are activated with design and other attributes combined with the types of uses we would like to see. So it, it's almost not defined in order to provide additional flexibility. But if, if she has language to offer, we could certainly have a conversation about that. And very inspired by Nelson's comments that he wants to stay in Santa Rosa thanks to this plan. And Greg Parker's comments. So I have talked with him and he did have three very clear questions and requests, all of which were around the St. Rose District and some of the things that we have talked about. The, the one thing I hadn't noted in my presentation is that he has asked for an increased setback for those transition zone policies. So right now it's written to be ten feet and he is asking for twenty feet. Twenty feet is a lot more strict than what the ten foot that we have proposed. It may be onerous in certain situations and it actually might go beyond where existing setbacks in the neighborhood are now. So I, I think our, our staff recommendation would be to stay at ten feet because it is a designation that is applied in transition areas throughout the planned area. I would say that we are going to have further discussions with that neighborhood specifically and other preservation districts around the zoning and the design guidelines to see if there can be greater refinements at the neighborhood level, at the neighborhood scale. And then I think I've addressed his other comments within our discussion already and I'll, I'll wait to hear what your thoughts are on that. And then Natalie of Airport Business Center. Her comments first was about the, the parking garages. And I will say a vision of this plan is to create opportunity for public-private partnerships by utilizing our existing parking. And that being said, we are, at, at the staff level, hoping to encourage the redevelopment of surface lots, but we have, there's nothing in the plan that would encourage the development of those parking garages. And those parking garages are actually envisioned to be used for shared parking agreements to help catalyze that residential development. And there, there are agreements being discussed right now that would be for fifty years. And so I know the, one of those garages she mentioned may already have a, an agreement in the works that would be fifty years, which would add a, a pretty strong, strong protection for that specific garage. So although the plan does not identify protections for those garages, it really does put more of an emphasis on redevelopment of the surface lots and, and really utilizing those garages for surplus parking. And the other thing she noted was about office use. Office use is allowed under the proposed plan. It is a. Um, it is an, is an important component to having a job housing balance and having that strong mix of uses. There absolutely can be structures that are entirely office and they will be able to remain that way. The active ground floor requirements are especially vital around the courthouse square area. And they do allow flexibility for offices on the ground floor. So it does identify design attributes and different facade techniques to create a pedestrian environment without requiring specific retail or commercial use to be there. So staff's perspective is that there is enough flexibility in the plan to accommodate what she needs. And then the last comment I have is from Bobby Lopez. And I do feel that we have addressed most of her comments within the environmental impact report. But I do have Andrew Hill, our consultant online, who may be able to expand a little more on, on those comments. Mike, does he have the ability to unmute himself?
Yes.
Okay. Andrew, are you able to respond maybe to Bobby's comments?
I can send a little nudge too that has a feature for that. Hopefully that'll give him the permission.
Is that like kicking someone under the staff table?
Exactly.
That's okay if he's not able to pipe up. So her comments were very similar to what she provided in response to our environmental impact report. And I will say there was, oh, he's saying he's not a co-host. Um, Mike, if maybe you could look into that. I don't know if he's able to unmute.
I can make you a panelist if you want to be viewed, Andrew. Right now you do have the permission to speak, but I'm happy to promote you. All right, Andrew, you are now a panelist, so you have the ability to show video if you'd like, as well as unmute yourself.
You don't have to turn your video on if you don't want, but feel free to have response.
Well, this is Andrew. I'm sorry, this, that was a miscommunication. I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to add Andrew Trappell to speak. I've just given Andrew Hill the permissions.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much. I was wondering if I was missing something, but. Yeah, so Ms. Lopez said a couple of things. I think to, just to respond to that, I would say that, first of all, in her comments just now, she made a request that we consider other policies in the plan to promote affordable housing. And so I just wanted to emphasize that there already are a, a number of mechanisms in place to incentivize affordable housing at the state level. Of course, there's a state density bonus. The city of Santa Rosa has complemented that with an additional density bonus over, over and above that. I would also highlight that the move to an FAR-based approach tends to incentivize the development of smaller units because there isn't a residential density cap anymore. And so the developers have, are, have an incentive to develop smaller units, which may be affordable by, by design to lower income households. So that is something that the, that the plan does as well to promote affordable housing. And then additionally, the land use chapter of the plan includes 13 different policies that speak to different aspects of promoting housing for people of all ages, abilities and income levels. And so I think there's a considerable amount that's being done either through existing regulations at the state, the city, at the city level and within the plan itself. So just to, just to put that out there in response to Ms. Lopez's request that we consider some other ways to do it. If there, if there are further ideas, specific ideas, you know, we'd be open to hearing them. But I just wanted to emphasize that there's a lot being done already. Additionally, I think Ms. Lopez asked just now for a bit of a clarification on how the impacts of gentrification, gentrification and displacement were analyzed in the EIR. And I think in the response to, to comments that's contained in the FEIR, we did provide a very detailed response. But quickly, I would say that in general, the plan seeks to promote development in opportunity areas, which are by and large, uh, commercial areas with vacant or underutilized parcels, not residential areas. In the established residential neighborhoods, the plan seeks to maintain and enhance those, those units. So the, right off the bat, the, the potential for displacement of existing units is, is, is limited by, by that factor. And then additionally, the plan seeks to promote the construction of 7,000 new units, which is a substantial increase. And because of the, the regulations and the policies that I mentioned, that, that there, there are considerable incentives for a, a good number of those units to be affordable to households at, at, at lower incomes. And then I think the third point that Ms. Lopez raised in her comments just now was a question about how Uber and Lyft, for example, are being accounted for in the, in the analysis. And quickly I would, we, we provided a, a response to that in the FEIR as well. But I would quickly highlight that the travel demand model does account for all types of vehicles on the road, including private and public vehicles. There isn't a way to drill down and say what percentage or what number of those are, are Uber and Lyft, but they are being accounted for in the travel demand model. So I hope that sheds a little bit more color onto, in response to some of the questions that Ms. Lopez raised.
Great. Commissioners, I'm going to ask if you have other questions, but one question I have from, from Ms. Lyle is, you've outlined staff recommendation, you know, options for the, the commission to choose when we do our discussion. Could you, do you have options for us with regard to the requests on the B Street area? I mean, I get what staff recommendation is, but what other options might we have as we discuss that?
If you'd like, we can focus on that and I can walk you through some different options. I do have a map that's not in your package, but it just shows the preservation district boundaries with the symbology of the plan itself that might help our discussion.
Okay. Is that something that would be helpful, Commissioners, when we get to that discussion? Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Carter.
As a follow-on to your question to Amy, I'm, I'm wondering if she can refresh our memory on how the cultural resources mitigations have been modified and how those might come into play in protecting the contributing properties in the St. Rose District.
Okay.
Did you want me to respond now or are we?
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So I would say that the, the plan recognizes the existing protections. And I can probably ask another staff member to walk through what those protections are in detail, if that's something you'd, you'd like to do at this time. But the specific plan does not offer protections beyond what's already required.
I, I thought I saw our, your presentation indicated that there were some additional modifications to the cultural resources mitigation measures and how those might come into play in considering the properties in the St. Rose District beyond other existing cultural resources guidelines that the city has.
So there's a couple of points in the presentation and just in the plan in general. One is that we are doing a cultural resource evaluation for sites within those opportunity areas. So there will be site-specific surveys. And there are additional policies around the transition zones between the historic districts and the, the opportunity areas or where development is likely to occur. And the EIR itself does include mitigations that are protective in nature and do prohibit the demolition of historic structures that are designated. So as sites develop, they would have to do a site-specific survey to identify whether they are, have significance or not. And so that is the work that we are hoping to do for those opportunity areas to just make sure applicants know going in whether those sites are historic or whether they are not. But beyond that, it would be the existing historic preservation guidelines that would remain in place, which we are bolstering in response to this plan and, and along with the, the zoning as well. But as far as how those properties are reviewed through the cultural heritage board and that process, we do have staff available who can help walk through that process for you and for the community, just for a better understanding.
Commissioner Carter, is that something you would like done?
I don't think that's necessary at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions right now? Yeah, Commissioner Duggan.
Yeah, just a quick one. On my map, it's kind of just hard to see the difference between FAR 3.0 and 4.0. So what is staff's current recommendation for the properties on B Street? Is it 4.0?
Sorry, I was muted there. Let me share my screen so I can show you a little better clarity here. So right now, the dark purple, and I apologize, it is a little bit hard to tell which is which, but the dark purple is a floor area ratio of four. And this lighter purple along B Street is a floor area ratio of three.
Hey Doug, how are you doing?
How are you? Conversation going on.
Need to mute Bobby.
So, so anyways, the proposal is to remove these properties along Lincoln Street from the FAR. So they would just not show color in the, and then also I did hear discussion about adding a transition zone behind those properties. So as those properties along College develop, they would have to transition to those backyards, similar to what's happening on the other side of Glen Street over here. So I'm going to stop my screen share for now.
So did that answer your question, Commissioner Duggan?
Uh, yes, but also as a follow-up, I think there's, uh, language in the plan saying that as, as parcels get redeveloped, that they have to meet the midpoint or higher of the FAR number that's assigned to the parcel. Is that correct? And what is, what is that, what would that mean for, say, one of the parcels along B Streets if it's FAR 3?
So they would need to meet a half of that, which would be pretty consistent with what's there now.
Any other questions right now? Okay. So, um, trying to think about the most efficient way to do this. What we could do is how we typically, obviously we have to do the CEQA resolution first. So we could go ahead and move that resolution, make sure that we're indicating whether we find that it's adequate or not the final. And then move on to also discuss the plan elements that staff has made changes to and follow that up by reading that resolution later, which would then include those changes. Does that, I don't know if you're out there, Ms. Crocker, but did that sound like a good method?
Hi Chair Cisco, yes, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so would someone like to move our first resolution for the purposes of discussion? Oh, Vice Chair Weeks.
Okay, I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa recommending to the City Council certification of the final subsequent environmental impact report, an adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and findings of fact for the downtown station area specific plan, file number ST18-002. Wait for the reading.
And I'll second.
Great. Okay, so that's been moved by Vice Chair Weeks and seconded by Commissioner Duggan. So let's, let's go ahead and open our discussion. Certainly discuss your feelings about the adequacy of the, the EIR. And then also start, let's open up the discussion as to some of the changes that staff has recommended as to the plan or feelings in general about the plan as well. Commissioner Peterson, how about you? You want to start?
Sure, sure. So, you know, while it may be, it warps speed, it, it does feel, you know, 18 months has, has felt like 18 months. And, and I mean that in a, a good way. I mean, I, I think that we've had a lot of opportunity throughout this process to really take both the sort of 30,000-foot view and also the sort of very micro view with, you know, that's come up even in the discussion today with some specific parcels. And as it relates specifically to the environmental impact report, I, I think it's adequate. I think we've seen the report address all the, the key issues that are required. I think we've gotten a lot of feedback from the public that's been integrated well into, into this draft report. So that's sort of my, my view of, of where we are on the, the EIR. I, I would be able to make all the, the findings that are in this resolution and, and support moving it on to the, the next stage. In regards to the proposed changes suggested by the staff, I, I support all of them. I think that they've been pretty clearly laid out in this, the presentation and the other materials that we've, we've gotten today. I think we need to be sort of respectful of the historic districts and, and the purposes that they've served. We've seen a lot of tough decisions about sort of what is appropriate in terms of development and balancing the needs of, of, you know, the reasons that these historic districts exist, along with the needs of, of, you know, a city that, that isn't in a, isn't in amber. It's, it's not in a, a time capsule. It's going to be evolving. And I think the proposed changes to the, uh, the plan as it relates to the historic districts makes sense. In particular, I think, you know, the parking issue, you know, I'm, I'm always going to be in favor of reducing parking. And I, I think that for a plan like this, you know, we're not trying to come up with an exact step-by-step kind of blueprint to get where we need to go. I think that Ms. Lyle, you know, hit on that, that, you know, we're, we're trying to maintain some flexibility. This is an, an aspirational document and we want to kind of lay expectations out in a way that allows the city to grow and keep young people here and become a little bit more vibrant. And a big part of that, I think, is, is getting away from very onerous parking burdens. There's a ton of parking downtown. Again, I mean, I always harp on it. I, the, the parking garage on E Street, I don't think I've ever seen a car parked, excuse me, on 7th Street. I don't think I've ever seen a car parked on the, the roof there. I, I think that's going to be one of the, the key things to keeping this a useful, functional, uh, specific plan. So again, I, I've heard the, the public comments on this. I think that the staff's responses to the public on the issues that have been raised has, has been adequate. And I, I would support the changes that are proposed.
Vice Chair Weeks.
Well, I love following Commissioner Peterson. I can just say ditto, ditto, ditto. I will, I will add a few more things. I also can, I can make all the findings and support moving this on to the City Council. this on to the City Council. I appreciate the changes that were made up till today, the fact that staff has been very nimble in responding to comments and concerns, both from the commission as well as from the public. I like the the new land uses, except we're not going to be talking about, are we going to be commenting on the plan after the EIR? Chair Sisko, or should I just say everything I have to say right now?
Okay.
Okay. So I do like the changes that Ms. Lyle talked about today and the transition that Commissioner Callia had brought up about College Avenue. I think that that is important. The whole idea of eyes on the creek and the active ground floor uses, I think, is is really good. And as well as, as I said before, the four new land uses. And I think the fact that the city was able to get a grant for the Historic Resources Survey is great. And if there's not enough money, go for, you know, go lobby the council for more money for that. And I think that's probably about all in my notes that, yeah, I think that's probably it. So I'm supportive of all this.
Okay. Commissioner Duggan.
Okay, thanks. I just realized my battery is low. So if I cut out, I'm getting an extension cord and I'll come back in. But I'm in agreement. I think the the response to the comments in the the draft EIR are more than adequate. I think they respond to all the comments that were made. And I think it's a good document. As far as the plan itself, I agree with all the staff proposed changes. And the only thing I would like to see, to hear more discussion on and to see changed as far as the recommendations within the plan is applying any kind of FAR numbers to the contributing structures in the Historic Preservation District. I think that those should probably just be taken off and leave those properties alone. I think, especially the St. Rose District, we know they have reason to be shy about these kind of things, their location within the city and what happened on Caritas Village. You know, it feels very much like we're nibbling away at the edge of this district. So it's not going to be extant anymore. And then we can just go ahead and start carrying down buildings and build new. And I don't think that's fair to the people who live there. And I think they've been very reasoned in their comments and discussions about this. And with, it's only, what, 12, 13 parcels? And however many, one of the commenters noted, I think it's reasonable to take those FAR numbers off of those parcels. But otherwise, I think it's a great plan and a good EIR. And I can support sending it off to council.
Commissioner Callia.
Thank you, Chair Sisko. I do agree with my fellow Commissioners. I, within the findings of the adequacy of the EIR, I can make those findings. And I do agree with the proposed staff recommendations. I also, one thing I think that none of us have touched on as well, is there was another staff recommendation about changing the rear setback to the zero to five, minimum to maximum. I'm also supportive of that. I am also, I think it's going to be great doing the historical study to determine the structures that are existing. And I am supportive of this entirely. I'm excited for this to happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Carter.
Well, just about everything's been said. I guess I need to go on record as saying I believe the in the adequacy of the environmental analysis and can make the necessary findings to recommend to the council approval and certification of the CEQA document. I'm also encouraged, I went back myself, to look at the cultural resources mitigations. And I'm sufficiently convinced that the protections provided through the city's programs and CEQA would protect the the B Street contributing structures. And as such, don't necessarily believe that the parcels need to be individually assigned in FAR. That's my opinion on that one. But I do support staff's recommended changes to the properties on Lincoln and and to the addition of the transition zones as discussed earlier.
And looks like we lost Commissioner Ocrepki. Left the building. Okay. Then I can also find the the final subsequent EIR adequate. I can make those findings. I agree with pretty much everything that has been said about, appreciate the attention to the Waterways Committee's recommendation. The Prince Memorial Greenway is a really important component and resource for downtown. And so finding some way to activate that better. And I think the the recommendations that staff has put in place to alter that language are very positive. Definitely agree with the transition zones that have been proposed by staff and also by the Commissioners here on Lincoln and College. And the the setback issue, I'm in agreement with that. I go, I go around and around about the B Street one because I just do. But I really think that we're, you know, there, the fact that you can hit the minimum of the FAR, I think that there are provisions in place that would protect anything that's built around there. You know, I was, I was around in the day when the Moore Building got built. And there was a lot of work, and there was a lot of public input and appeals. And it turned out really, really well. So I think we do have the policies and the protections in place. And and I realize that probably hits a little hard, given what St. Rose just went through with Caritas. But I think the B Street built environment will be protected. And I, I'm going to tend to go with staff's recommendation and leave the FARs alone. We could go to a lot of effort trying to identify each parcel that we would want to be built a particular way. And that isn't really what what this plan is about. And so I think I can agree with all of staff's recommendations on that. I would just toss in one more thing on Roberts Avenue, which is that the gateway symbol be moved to Third, the the intersection of Third and Roberts to be installed at the time that that's punched through. I think that was my sort of my point, is that that is a gateway. And to have it over on the on the trail is great. But I want, I would like it clear that it's also a gateway from downtown through Third down to the Roseland area. So with that, any other discussion, comments, questions? Okay. So with that, we have the the EIR resolution moved by Vice Chair Weeks and seconded by Commissioner Duggan. And our recording secretary will take our votes.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan?
Aye.
Commissioner Callia?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ocrepki had to leave at 6:00 PM. So we'll mark his as absent from this. Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weeks?
Aye.
And Chair Sisko?
Aye for me. So that passes with six ayes, Commissioner Ocrepki being absent. So with that, let's move on to our other resolution. And would somebody like to move that? How about you, Vice Chair Weeks? Let's keep it consistent.
Okay. I don't want to hog all the limelight here.
Hey, why not?
I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa recommending to the City Council approval of a general plan amendment, making text and figure changes to allow adoption of the downtown station area specific plan, and recommending adoption of the downtown station area specific plan, file number ST18-002. And wait for the reading.
And I'll second.
I love it. Okay, so that resolution was moved by Vice Chair Weeks, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Any other comments, discussion, thoughts? Okay, then we'll ask the recording secretary to take our votes.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan?
Aye.
Commissioner Callia?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ocrepki is absent. We'll go to Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weeks?
Aye.
And Chair Sisko?
And I am aye also. So that passes again with six ayes, Commissioner Ocrepki being absent. I believe that's all of our resolutions. Am I correct on that? It is.
That is correct.
And and not, you know, a massive outpouring of changes. So it really says something as to how the process has worked and how hard staff has worked. And again, how Ms. Lyle has really, really connected with the public that has spoken. So thank you for that, Ms. Lyle, and every other staff member that I know is behind her and working on this. And and thank our commission. You guys do a lot of work, very thoughtful work on a, on a lot of volume of material. So thank you for that. And with that, I will conclude our meeting, and we'll adjourn to our meeting in October. So bye, everybody.